Regular council meetings for Sunday, August fourteenth will now come to order. Please rise. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and the Constitution of our home. We stand as one nation, united in its soul, with liberty and justice for all. My first item on the agenda is consent agenda, existing on the approval of prior meeting minutes from July twenty fourth and the special meeting on July thirty first and the claim ordinance A zero one zero seven three.
Mister House President, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda. With the seven twenty four minutes, the seven thirty one special meeting minutes and claim ordinance. A O one dash seven two three.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mister Renard and seconded by Miss Coats to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Okay, next item is petitions and delegations for office and comments. Please state your full name. And whether you are an Ellsworth city resident, office and comments are limited to five minutes per subject. Unless it comes with further questions. Would anyone like to just come? Oh, please, come up on you, please.
Yes, I'm Jane Bobhager and I work at Mines. I'm not a city resident, but I worked in Ellsworth and our church is in Ellsworth. And I had sent a request to the council for a letter of support for our church. We have the Divine toll church, which is.
It's agenda.
Is it in there?
Yeah.
I don't have an agenda. Okay, perfect.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt this one.
Yes, I just wanted to request that. So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm Marvin Bush, resident of the city. I had a few items here. The tree that's been planted along Main Street that need to be trimmed, not all of them, but some of them. They're making a blind intersection. You can't see what's coming. I get around that because I look at the mirror, the glass on the windows on the other side of the street. And I can see what's coming down, but I don't know everybody does that trick. Next, when you go to mow the weeds on East First Street into there. There's weeds there that's two foot tall. For about two blocks.
What did you say the intersection was in, sir? Thurston?
What?
What was the intersection?
East First, East First Street. Uh, then there is the ordinance. About people mowing their lawns and blowing the grass out into the street. And there's nothing being done about them people that's doing that. That needs to stop. Because it's putting up gutter traps. And those need to be run after every rain. I've still got one by my place that hasn't been cleaned up for, since the last rain, what, three days ago? I see they finally started patching some of the streets. A little bit before they seal. That should have been done quite a bit before to get them all brought up into shape. The ones I see up by the hospital. My first bag, what is it, Ailer Street? Going north, you drive a lot of, you're. Your rats weren't filled up. They need to be. Need to patch the streets up, make them smooth. There isn't a smooth street in this town. Oh, and the water cuts that the water department makes. Why is it that after they fill it up with concrete? And within three months, it's cracked up again and set. That isn't right. What they doing? Making an only inch thick concrete? Eight street going down to Douglas. The last hundred, hundred fifty feet. That is rough. We need to take that planer up there and plant their pumps off of there. And maybe a few other streets that would work on too. This is all I have for now. Actually, thanks for that.
Anything else?
Move on. The first item of unfinished business is Kirkland Michael. I tend to be able to report that some of our projects are sort of wind down here. They've been winding up a long time ago. Quick update on the multi-use path. If anybody's been down south, so picked up those signals, you've seen some equipment. Contractor has got started on the box extensions. Of course, they ran into a utility conflict with a communication cable with a fruit box. What I saw and what I heard is that the utility owner's supposed to be out there tomorrow. So you help expose the line and they think they can just incorporate it underneath the box that's embedded at the very end. That line had been relocated, it just didn't get put out quite far enough without its spot. Looking for that issue to get resolved tomorrow so they can keep moving forward. As of right now, the contractor is planning to focus on the box extensions first. And then work on the sidewalk second. There is a chance since I think the sidewalk could be done. It should have done by subcontractor, they could work on it early, but for now, it's not going to be one or the other. So let's move along. The cost share project to improve the multiple sidewalks, the only remaining items now is to get the handrails by security first painted. They aren't, they haven't installed. The contractor said he's waiting on the primer. They had a one week lead time. To come in and then they don't prime and paint those. And there's also a drain and drainage at the intersection of First and Lincoln there needs to be finished up.
That's a great spend installed already. I'm enjoying my.
Yeah, it's a great, now. The K D O secret project, so this is one that's not been bid yet. Kirkland, we've been working on the plans. This is to resurface Douglas through town. We did turn in the final plans and specifications to K D O Friday of last week. So I asked for them to give us authority to advertise the project. Since we get that from them, we can start advertising that project for bids. Sanitary sewer study, we're still finalizing the plans to get good for the K D H E. Turn lane projects, K one forty, the North One, all the pavement has not been installed. It's a little of the rock edge wedge. The contractor was out Friday marking the locations for the new stripes and they will be in. Hopefully, safety good strikes, but they don't, don't have an exact date on that yet, but that is the only remaining item on that project. And another thing I do report on, this is a city project, the K D O project to improve like turn lanes at K fourteen south of town. That project is complete. Short of final plans of styles. If you have anything over there, let's check out those new turn lanes as well. If you have any, entertain any questions if there are any. Questions for John?
Thank you, John.
On our note. Is the lease with Elver Tumble Dance and Cheer.
Melissa, Paul, Brittany and I had a meeting back in June. And we've had multiple meetings back and forth, but this is the final payment and everyone's happy with the lease space. Hundred dollars a month, fifty dollars for me. She did have the, when we knew about it and I told her she could have her parents' class, you know, sign people up for just kids, you know, on Saturday. So that's done. All I need is the lease, the last thing they'll need to do is give me a copy of their next possible listings. And then Melissa and I, Melissa, you have any updates or you have your lease?
Captain President, I make a motion to approve the lease agreement presented between City, Ellsworth, Elver Tumble Dance and Cheer, Destin, Stanwell. City Minister executing the lease on the city's behalf.
It's been moved by Mister Renard and seconded by Mister Johnson. That we have approved the lease agreement with Elver Tumble Dance and Cheer as presented and allow the city administrator to execute the contract. Is there any further questions or comments? Seating none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Okay, next thing on the agenda is assessing the downtown meter lid installs. We've had some concerns about that. The contractor has done some things to mitigate those concerns, but I thought it would be worthwhile for us to actually go look at those installations and see if we agree. So we will adjourn to Federal Street in front of the law.
We all want.
If all the money comes, we'll tell you.
Say, we'll live on the new business. First order new business is an ordinance establishing minimum housing code in the city of Elver. Oh, sorry. One item of old business. So the mayor made a suggested appointment, I think that's what you call it, to the planning commission. Mister Bill Evans. It was suggested for appointment. He applied, gave us a letter of interest and the mayor thought it was, he was a good candidate for appointment. So we need to vote on his, accept his appointment, mayor. Bill Evans.
To the planning commission?
Yes.
Mister President, I make the motion to appoint Bill Evans to the, the Ellsworth Planning Commission or just the
Planing Commission.
Planning Commission slash board of zoning use. The Ellsworth Planning Commission slash Board of Zions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved, we've moved the second item, that is we approve the appointment of Bill Evans to the planning commission in zoning and door zoning teams during further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
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 Question carries. We thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Very important.
Just for the record, I did ask the mayor by a text message before, since he'd begun today, and he did give me a recommendation.
I've got hundreds of hours of bill on the afternoon to pay his trust base call on me. Okay, all right, now I'm going to do business. First order of the, and ordinance establishing minimum housing code in Ellsworth.
It was, it's gonna be, we, we vote for this, this like, I feel like a break it in, you can't put an outlet in your house without getting a licensed electrician. Because if it is, I ain't voting for it. No, but I can't tell him, I mean, I've read it, but is that, what's it going half?
Well, what I was after with working with Melissa on this is mainly, one of the primary things that's starting is water access.
Okay.
Water, I am requesting that we update the standard where we require water access as a part of health and welfare and all that stuff. You know, requiring that each person who has a house in the city connect to the water, especially if they're connected to sewer. Okay. But this all we, this, this, this policy, I think, encompasses just, just making it standard things. I don't think we require any electrical code or anything in our updated reading, Melissa.
There's some logical stuff, yeah, not, not, nothing. But it's not huge. I think it's.
I mean, I won't give her.
Yes.
No, it doesn't, it, it doesn't have to do with who can work on a house. It has to do with what a house is required to be considered fit for human occupation, human residence. So you need to have these X, Y, Z things in order for the home to be considered habitable. And if it's not, then the city through this process can deem the home as unfit for human habitation and essentially close it off. And it's a quicker process being the abatement process and it would only be for those conceivably really bad cases where somebody's, you know, quote unquote, saying somewhere with no wire, saying somewhere with no sewer.
Yeah.
And it doesn't resolve the, the life of the home, but it just results. You know, for, you know, someone who's quote unquote, you know, maybe squatting somewhere and not. If you don't have a sewer, you're going somewhere. You know, those are the things that we're trying to prevent from happening. Right.
But it's, and that's really what I'm, that's really what we've been working on to try to come up with.
So what did we have before? Was it kind of something, but just not this? You know, it's detailed?
That's correct. One of the issues that I intended to resolve with this was right now, our code does not require anyone to have access to water. But they can be drained with the sewer, which is kind of inspiring for us process. And so I would like to know, that was, that was the first thing that I was thinking of when we looked into this policy. But then we got into, well, especially with situations like a basement and other things, I just felt that it would, it wasn't a bad proposal to set the minimum standard for what?
So, okay, so like, how does this work? Somebody gets on webs, the website as a complaint. Delvin just gets to go walk around in the house and make sure they got the water flow. Like over to your house or?
Del has some inspection rights anyways under our city's code in regard to inspecting her or for reasons. But yeah, this is similar as far as he would get a check or see, or I mean, like the girls would know if your water's turned on or
That is.
We're starting on those types of things.
So at the public, oh, you can't pay your bill, they turn the water off, you can't move in your house.
Right, that's the problem. I don't think it's, I mean, it's not meant to be like, get your water turned off and then we're closing up your house the next day, but it's meant to be, so for example, Lions put this in place because they had some individuals who own property, they were out of town, not from the area. The home wasn't secure, there was no water, there was a sewer and there were people squatting.
Living.
There, but, but you couldn't get them for trespassing necessarily because the owners didn't care or whatever. So the city of Lions is like, this home is not fit for human habitation. You're not allowed to be here. That's the idea behind it, but it, I mean, it could be strictly interpreted the way that you're saying, but
Yeah.
Essentially, you're trusting your staff to manage those decisions and
They would have.
So much better.
Yeah.
And I, and the way I run it is I, I'm not interested in targeting people or down on their luck. Like Delvin asked about that earlier tonight, and the way I answered it was simple. I said, look, we've got plenty of charities and plenty of things that we can help for. We're here to help people, you know, and in reality, asking them to connect the water is not about revenue. It's about making sure that they are, they live in a healthy environment. And that by us challenging them to be better, my thought process is, you know, we're also making them better. And then there, and then in the process of doing that, there's a ripple effect that it will increase the quality of life for everybody here. And not to mention all the fiscal benefits as well as us helping each other. So then I am asking for a little bit of trust because we are trying to confront some of the more challenging properties here. And this is kind of a, a snag that we're running into. And this will help make it easier to confront those things, especially plumbing, things of that nature.
We know, you had to have a regular bath. I bet you do. Run right over with the pump. But it's all, it's, it's things that, yeah, I kind of, I just wondered about that because I used to work in Great Bend and it's, it's bad. Like, if you have to have
Those are.
You can't do none.
Building codes and things like that.
Yeah.
And I can relate with that from my previous position, working with the International Building Code. That, that's way overkill for what I'm after. I'm just trying to establish the minimum standards. I will, and I, I would never recommend in this board to I B C A, Van Gogh, it's similar to what you're describing. It'd be great then, then.
Just, just to comment, you know, talking about the electricity, there are not many, if any, licensed electricians in Jonesburg.
I think I wrote it. Doesn't look bad, I guess. I mean, it would alleviate too if we had but it would alleviate if we had migrants that came to town wanting to set up tents. No, you can't get any water for sure, right? I mean, we would build so you'd have it, right? I mean, that. Okay. I don't want ten cities around here.
It's definitely not a way that I anticipated, but that's a good point.
So the finally relevant is, I'm giving this as a complete overhaul of the book we had. It's been a location before.
We didn't have anything in place before, to be honest with you, as far as I don't think you've been anything that says you need wires for service. The language is straight from the beginning. I didn't change it. So you're certainly open to do that if you don't find parts of it, or I mean, that's up to you guys. Well, the interview.
I think you shared this was a new thing or a new overhaul. It's just, I'm a viewpoint right now, but if we do, it is to existing ordinances, I'd like to see what it is we're changing. Which in the next one, I, you do red lines of whoever's changed, so I appreciate that. That doesn't apply.
Yes, this is all new language.
Well, like I said, we didn't read it, we just copied it, or I just went to believe because there, and ask for what's the look at it.
We got anything else?
What about people that, you know, just have one bag of garbage and they set it out and they start coming by and they don't, maybe they're gonna get penalized? Because a lot of people still do that, you know?
Oh, I missed that.
I mean, just say, you gotta have, let's just say you gotta have a trash can or something. Maybe not, maybe I just read there. I wouldn't have been able to validate this one.
It's on even page four of the document or six.
I, I went through it too. Maybe it just, it just talks about.
Each unit shall be provided such receptacles, like trash receptacles. And that is incorrect. They can purchase it from, so like that, or rented, yeah. It's page four of the document.
Every one needs to be provided such a receptacle, I see, okay.
You can approve it with that.
Yeah, we can take that.
Is.
Say something about like the trash has to be bagged or something like that.
Yeah, you, we are, we can edit it whichever way the board wishes to.
That might be, or Melissa, do you have any idea of the test already?
I do think that you can, yeah, the trash has to be in. I'm not gonna swear to that, but I don't say in the trash. Section, I love, we don't require or set.
You recall when Mr. Stecker of our mayor, this was a thing and he had some complaints about it and our ordinance currently just says that's be in a bag. There is no requirement for a, some people have fifty five gallon drums, some people, it's not like, Phil just talked about, just set the bags out in the curb and some people do do that. We either have a police department as well set about such order. So we do have the ordinance talking about that and he did a bag, but we didn't talk about, we want to require a receptacle. That was a couple of years ago. Do you remember?
Yeah, it's wet.
It was when, when our mayor, he brought that up and kind of wanted something that we could sit and say, and was, no, we don't want that, that he didn't like fifty five gallon drums being on like Douglas and the residents. Well, our ordinance doesn't require anything other than cash in the bag itself. So.
We haven't really had any issues with that. So I would say we, I would, I would have, that's, from my perspective, I would have no issues removing that particular clause. When we, when I snagged this, it was, my target was more the water and sewer connections as well as standards. This is not a penalized one on my, my.
Good.
Well. Well.
Oh, we have to like update this, try to update.
Okay, I think.
Do we have that enough? Oh, we need to.
Yeah, or.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I don't recall, I don't remember.
We don't think approval without that, and you just. Throw it in that half.
Yeah, that'd be.
All right, well, Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt um. An ordinance establishing a minimum housing code in the city of Ellsworth as presented minus. Uh, the garbage and trash receptacle line six, I. Do we, do I need to, I don't do an effective thing? Like to go into effect immediately or?
It's a published.
Publication.
Well, second. Been moved by Ms. Coats and seconded by Mr. Renard. To adopt an ordinance establishing a minimum housing inclusion in the city of Ellsworth. And striking section six of our ideal trash research. Starting further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, so all right.
All right.
Those same time. Question carries. Next item is the ordinance stating we need students or.
Good standing. Council President, um. Uh, in response to the weed problem, I'm tracking that. Um, some of the uh internal discussion is who's going to do what and. The one avenue I thought about going down is code enforcement route. Or, uh, and it boils down to whether the city is going to mitigate the weeds and the curb. And then the street or the citizens do, and when I reached out to the municipalities, it really is mixed. Who does what, some, like the ordinance that I asked Melissa to review that I had taken from the like the Kansas municipalities is written. To where the, the right of way or uh the adjacent landowners to the middle of the street. And so that would mean that the citizen would be responsible for maybe eating the weeds on the curb. Um, but historically, uh, as he has alluded to, the city has um. Taken responsibility in the past. And uh, the internally in these stats, uh, is that uh. The some of the staff does not feel we have the resources that are bad to her. We are, I'm, I am wondering what way you want us to go and who, which side and how should we like us to read. We, so I introduce the ordinance because that's what the Kansas, the municipalities are. And it updates, uh, it updates the weed ordinance because the right of way, and if we were to go the. We, we were to, if you were to choose to go the, you know. Code enforcement route, the definition and the weed or the weed nuisance is rather big. In terms of defining what that right of way is and what this does, is that actually uh. Uh, updates it.
So how about the city handles? Getting rid of the roots.
Well, um, there's, I don't know, I'm not aware of any uh magical potion, we would just have to go around and spray it. Early in the season like he was living too.
My speed mile looking is very much different. When I spub the grass, even though I keep my curbs other clean, it's on my own, but. If somebody were spraying, it's like, oh, my yard is killed off by it. I feel a little upset.
For verification purposes, if you pass the ordinance. In front of you today, you are saying it is your responsibility as a landowner to maintain. The, the city would not be spraying or mitigating the weeds, we're saying it's your. Okay, just.
Here's how the city was gonna handle it.
He didn't.
Know. For that purpose.
Well, we would just have to be careful. But that is, but that, I, I trust Detroit, the guys who know what they're doing, if I asked you.
The city used to spray the turf and gutter in years past.
Yes.
No, I haven't seen that done for some time.
And that's why I'm bringing it before council is to revisit the topic to make sure that it's still the way we want to go. Because that's balance and other people have given their feedback on this, then they're making. So that's why I wanted to bring this to you to get clarification, which really wanted me to go to the next Q.
I mean, I think. When the surge falls off, the city puts the curb back, right? I mean, you don't have to pay for that, so they don't, at least keep three foot tall weeds growing out of it. Because if it's grown out of the curb, the curb probably ain't there. It's probably some gone dirt, right? I mean, it's just. Gone.
Yeah, I think like I said, I took care of mine.
Yeah, and this. I'm as far, the houses that have three foot tall weed, they quite don't care if they have the grasses, right? That's just my guilty.
California, I say all the time. You know, I've got a lot of milling over about this, going back and forth and just morals. Street maintenance, road maintenance, um. You know, I think it's. The stuff that's in the joints of the curb and the stuff that's in the cracks in the street, I think it's basic street maintenance. That we ought to be taking care of, um. Now, I understand we are short on staff and all that, I did my tons a lot last year. Um, about the grasses growing in Devon Street, in all dimensions of Devon Street, that, that was ridiculous that they got on that. And then. Um. And then it just deteriorates, paid one another really badly, uh, serious curve. Curves a little more resilient, which is concrete, um, and the chip seal stream, so we can, but. You know, I think where I ended up. Because I think that it's somewhat. Um. We widespread it, but it's, you know, localized problems, um. You know, I think where I came down is that I would be more in favor of saying that yes, it's the responsibility. To the face of the curb or, you know, stuff that's hanging over the curb. And that. You know, it becomes a nuisance violation if you don't do that. And then you're notified that, hey, here's a problem. You've got seven days or whatever, we just want to give somebody for grass mowing, and if you don't do it in that time, we're gonna spray it. And that's all I would do would be spray it, wouldn't try and cut it or. Do anything that, and I think people need to be notified like Aaron, you know, you got notifications, say, hey, we're gonna spray in front of your house. You can quite get out there, do I, I did, so now I'm gonna. You know, my biggest concern is that we are getting to be a larger population of elderly people. And single moms who. You know, this says that they're gonna be responsible on the middle of the street and. We just don't want that, I'm afraid somebody's gonna get out there with their fifty pound bag of salt and salt our street to try and kill the weeds, say, this is gonna kill them forever. And that'll destroy our baby. Wow. So I don't want that, but I, I would be more in favor of it being a nuisance violation, they get notified. After whatever the standard amount of time is, then we can spray it. It's like I said, for people who have really nice yards, probably do it even.
Yeah.
And I don't want to start kind of tell everybody they gotta edge their, their curb. It's so guilty of that for a long time, I still don't do it religiously about edging the curb. But I just don't want it to get to be returning everybody to the little bit of grass, Karen, you have a comment?
Well, I have a question, I don't have a curb at my house, and you guys refuse to bring my road, so do I have to just? Keep mowing as far out as the grass grows, grows to the middle of the road, I have to mow it?
Good question.
Pardon me?
That's a good question.
Yes.
I think, I'm gonna get sent into this ordinance, so if you can.
You don't seem to care about maintaining the road, and the grass is growing, whether out all the time.
Sure. Martin, you had a comment?
Yeah.
You, you kind of took the wind out of my shell, but I was about to say, we only had one link, did you brush it?
Years ago, when I worked for the city. People would mow out to the back of the curb, and you still got weeds growing up. I don't know why they don't scoot over far enough, I scooted over and I could mow right at the edge from the base of the curb. And get that down, but people don't do that. We designed. A cutter. To go on the back of a tractor. That would reach out with the disc on it and would run behind the backside of the curb. To cut the weed. Uh, it really worked good on the grass. That would grow over like that. Something like that, it was on the backside, it needs to be between the rear wheels and front wheels. So you can see it a lot better, we didn't decide it that way. I've got one other thing I forgot, on weeds. These lots that you tore these houses down. The city owns that lot then, is that right?
No. We, uh, we, what the way the process works is we mitigated them, but it'll lean on profit. So we did not purchase the lot.
Well, who's supposed to keep the weeds and grass down on them?
Technically speaking, the owner, but technically, when, uh, what tends to happen, you know the drill. We send them the normal nuisance violation once a year, and they don't respond, and they may not mitigate anything. Until it goes, goes on tax sale, so that is three years, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa.
Well, there's a lot east of part of town, you got five foot tall weeds in it.
Yes, and we've got, we are utilizing the budget to mitigate the properties that we can. The worst ones, those aren't worth the worst this year, so we're gonna take more next year, and hopefully next year we'll get some grants to help us mitigate and keep up on that stuff too. And some of that CDBG grant will also help residents who are struggling to also fix up their homes, so that's the intent.
I don't know, who owns the east side of that lot? Uh, if somebody else owns it, I don't know. The last person that lived there, they're long gone. But they had a daughter. And she died recently in Hoifington. I didn't know where she was at. And I don't know any of your family. She was, well, there's one, a girl in uh either Washington or Oregon. I believe. That's a long way to be to come down with a lawnmower.
Yeah. That's true.
And I, I think it's. It's kind of a thing with the aging population is those things happen to people in airhouses with. One, they may not even know they have, and two, they have no intention of ever coming back to, so to. Don't really worry about it.
That's. So, and that's partly why I employed Delvin to where I'm using now and, uh. And Steve, where I'm using him now is because we're trying to confront those issues, like we had one. Same situation where the death certificate was never filed, now they're working with Melissa to file that. So we can start getting these things rolling and at least get them onto younger families and give those houses more available, that's a little, it's precarious for us, it's still worth it.
And, and knowing how federal funding. Works, and CBG is a federal funding, paid off by states. I'm pretty sure that they would not allow us to purchase the properties and then mitigate, mitigate them, or had intended purchase them before mitigating them, so. We're kind of, our hands are kind of tied by the funding source that we're using to do the mitigations on our. Thank you, Mark. And Karen.
You didn't answer my question, no.
I'm gonna answer, I think that it's something that we need to work into this ordinance before we approve it, it's how we're going to. Or any ordinance is how we take care of. Your area in particular, because you're.
I mean, I just keep mowing the house further all the time, but.
And that's probably gonna be the answer realistically.
Thanks, Melissa.
Trying to be real. But actually, I think we need to table this and think on that a little bit more. There, you can treat it as a code issue for now.
So is my understanding, um, because we do have to confront some of these weeds, um. Okay.
I think you call it a rank vegetation.
See, maybe, uh, is that the guidance from now, we hammer up this ordinance that. Then I use the code enforcement side of the things to confront some of these.
My suggestion.
Okay, I, I'll, I can handle it from here, we'll get this, we'll start focusing on it.
You can. Let's see, uh, lease agreements for the airport. Or on the ground, at least, so next item. Stand and roll, so you're introduced that.
Council President, I have renegotiated, I am, I am re, I am renegotiating leases with. Both individuals who lease land out by the airport because their farmable land did change with the new runway. Um, I was originally approached by Donald and Lonnie, so. I think I pronounced that, I'm sorry, I'm not, um. Uh, but then I also extended that renegotiation to Anita, sort of a group. And, um, well, uh. I drafted a contract via utilizing a mixture of the old one that we used, um. The USDA's standard form that they use for non-irrigated, non-irrigated farmland. Uh, the forty dollars is around number that was kind of picked between, uh. Lonnie and Donald and I, and I also based it off of the average twenty, twenty-two. Rates for Ellsworth County, and that was around fifty-four dollars an acre for non-irrigated farmlands. And, um. I found out there's a lot of clay and sand in the soil where they are forming. And mix that with the, uh. Just trying to be fair, uh, this is the lease agreement that I came up with, and I was requesting your permission to continue. Negotiation with these folks, uh, they both are in agreements, they're both looking over the lease right now, but, uh, Melissa's approved this draft of the lease and the. Forty dollars seems to be fair, I'm not interested in market values, which is I am, it's being. Or being, being partners with people who take care of the properties. And forty dollars seems fair to the average for prime non-irrigated farmland. And else together.
Seems fair to me, if they, if they think it's fair, it seems fair to me, and this, that's all cut out, so there's no big areas that you can sit down and. Plow or reed my guy or. Grow beans a day or, or that, and we need to meet up with the maintenance, general maintenance facility.
But I did end Melissa a little bit of the lease before I brought it to you, thank you, Melissa.
Anybody have any questions? I hear you, Melissa.
Karen, do you want to make a comment?
Go on. Skull will volunteer to go.
This year, Council President, I propose a motion for the endorsement. Of the two lease agreements outlined between the City Mills Group and the tenants Donald and Lonnie Soka, along with Anita Switczak. Furthermore, I suggest granting authorization to the city administrator to formally execute the lease agreements on behalf of the city.
Also, Karen.
It's been moved by Mr. Johnson and section of Mrs. Coats. That we approved the lease agreements for the farmable acreage at the airport. And allow the city administrator to execute those contracts, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I pose same sign, question carries, thank you. Okay, yeah. Not fun stuff. I requested the city council to support divine hope church creation habitation, does it?
Um, Jen, uh, Jen wrote me an email, uh, last week, there, uh, she's working with their church, Divine Hope Church. Um, they're looking to replace the concrete porch, handicap ramp and sidewalk along Fourth Street. Um, in Luslow or, uh, pavement project on Douglas.
Yes, um, thank you for letting me speak, um, anyway, yes, I am with the Divine Hope Church. Uh, non-denominational church in Ellsworth, and our congregation purchased the old Episcopal church. Um, so if you've seen that property there, you will know that the, the porch to the main entry is cracked really bad and settled. And we've done some grinding to it and taken it down, plus the ramp that's on it now is not any accessible. So we, uh, have gotten a bid from Tyler and Sons to replace the porch, the steps, the ramp. And then also the sidewalks along Fourth Street from our property edge to. Up to the, um. Uh, the corner on Douglas where it stopped. Where you guys will do the, uh. Corner project whenever that. Where you guys will do the uh, quarter project whenever that's available, um, anyway. The uh bid has come in a little over ninety thousand dollars. We're requesting uh a grant of sixteen thousand and, excuse me, seventeen thousand. And I'm just wanting to see if we could get a letter of support from the city to proceed with that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Council President, I move that the city council administration direct letters. Forced to Divine Hope Church's grant application submitted to the Dangy Needs and Foundation.
All second.
It's been moved by Mr. Renard, seconded by Ms. Coats, that we. Prudence, or we allow the city administrator to write a letter of support to Divine Hope Church for their grant application. Dangy Needs and Foundation. Any further description? Hearing none, all those papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose a sign, wish you carries. Okay, we on to. Uh, let's I guess say in uh the new business, uh, on to Department of Recreation. Uh, here we have this four, four, same streets. Uh, water sewer, do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything to do. I'm glad to say you know all of them there. I don't really have anything for saying, uh, I did attend the funeral of the name Sister Kansas City for the fall police officer. So I didn't know where this, I didn't press up to come ask for money or anything, what she was gonna give me, so. But I didn't attend the funeral of Kansas City, um, as for, for some updates on policy, I didn't obtain. Uh, permission for Mr. Stanwell to do such a thing. Um, I appreciate the city allowing me to do that as representative in our, our community there, um. As you can see in my report, I did kind of note it a little bit that. Um, if it was discussed last council meeting, have a little bit more detail for officer specific detail. Um, but that's the route the council wants to go, I'm certainly willing to work on that and there is a conversation with Mr. Stanwell and myself and our. RMS provider, our management provider, that's where I get that, that report that I currently submitted from. There's not an exact report like what I submit now, but she did, they could show me some ways to kind of do that, so. If that's, I know Darcy's not here, uh, she's the one who had her request, but if that's what the council certainly requested. I'm willing to work with Mr. Stanwell to provide some sort of a more detailed. Officer specific report, I did kind of with some of my concerns last meeting over here. I know how hard that is sometimes, but I'd be planning on submitting something and working. With Mr. Stanwell, you guys could create such a thing, so. That's all I have, unless you got something for me.
Chief May going to be too, I'm not sure. Um, some of the concerns is that if we list officer names, that. Can shift us the opposite direction in terms of uh.
Well, if we're not, it's a lot of street department's not putting on here, this guy knows the grass for thirty minutes, why does he gotta? Say we pulled somebody over, I mean that. I mean, they're not listening to everybody that they did, water department doesn't have, hey, this guy, just be polite, come on.
I, I did not require that of my department, it's, but I just, we just, we just, I just wanted to share our concerns. Just highlight, what I ask of my, and I'm just right, um, I, what I am asking with that hardness is just to give a synopsis of what are we doing with the guidelines.
Yeah.
You know, uh, opportunity to brag about departments, uh, with some of the challenges we've had. And that's kind of what I've asked.
Um, yeah, I kind of, I don't know, say why, um, you know, we're. Pulling excessive overtime or something, we may want to know what they're feeling, um. I think some of Darcy's concerns and pain from the links. Um, where she was hearing from people, which I'm gonna encourage people to use our new online service, contact video. They know that, that was all it.
Yeah.
So, I, we'll wait till Darcy's here, but I didn't, I, I, I think she's not here, so, but I just wanted to bring it up, see if we could resolve this.
Well, at least wanted to make sure I voiced any concerns.
And we want to. Want you to treasure. Our million specters, we're gonna just record, I know Angela's been busy with the things and the things. Uh, fire department and a very poor city attorney. See clerk.
Nothing.
Feel well, city administrator.
I just wanted to update space to like seven page diachrash, um, uh, but then the, the goats. Uh, I made it sign the sixty day contract. Their big challenge and why I put a hole to it is insurance, so they're gonna, they, they said they'll have insurance, they had to reach out to Wichita. Uh, Nanny Scapers, I don't know if their neighbors there or not. The dog people there. Um, and now that's, uh, that's, that was their name. They should give that as we go, I'd say. I think I'm.
Uh, city council, Mr. Wilson.
Got a couple of things. Okay, uh, Chief, I think I asked you this a couple of years ago and maybe this is one Melissa question, can you refresh my memory on? Dogs at residences, there are ordinance about the number of dogs people can have or. Is it kind of funny and it's, you can only have so many dogs outside at a time?
Yes, sorry, what I want to do that you think on the internet?
That's a crime.
He is. I don't know, he is a specific.
I don't remember, I apologize, I don't remember if it's specifically you can have five animals, it doesn't matter what they are, no chickens. At all, but uh, whether it's an animal like a dog, cats, domesticated combination, or it's. You know, five dogs, no more than three cats. I've worked in enough places, they're all different, and we just had this conversation with Officer Sergeant Green, who lives in Clapham, and there's. It's why that that's in my head and there's only three, it's only two outside at a time, it's a weird day. Um, I don't know, on my head, I certainly don't know, I can stupidly find the answer while I'm running a computer and get that. Um. I guess, concerned if somebody may have too many animals, is that some of the?
Yes, like is there, is there a limit to the number of animals one can have in their home?
Right, see if there's not, there should be, and I know I'm not a big fan of big government, but I also don't think it's mission at fifteen dogs. You know, thirty-seven cats, right? I think that your business and I would love to have those myself, like some other people would. I, but that's, there's, there's obviously times that are gonna be a shortage.
Where if, they would be kind of kennel.
I mean, we give the ordinance, there is a special spot in animals per kennel, pet and all these things, stuff like that. Yes, there is that, and it'd be a state regulated thing, so I don't have an answer for you today, I can certainly, um. Look tomorrow.
Yeah.
On the computer and um, I can uh independently address you with information and or as you can line this report back to me. With everybody as well, but. Something is something else.
Wow, no person shall hold, no person in our household shall own or harbor outside their residence more than three dogs. Or like outside litter ups, or more than three pets, or more than six months of age, or more than one of their kittens.
Your question is, what does outside of the home mean?
Right.
Does that literally mean outside of the residence or? Cause I mean, to me, that doesn't mean you can have fifteen inside, only have three outside at a time. That's kind of, doesn't, kind of the double negative, right? That doesn't really, that doesn't really work what, what we want, so. I think maybe something we work on, I get a, maybe set up those, Mr. Stanwell and. And city attorney's thing, but maybe we look into that and maybe we work some of that, if we want to work on some things where, you know, guidance. We're getting a policy still on, what would we like to consider, you know, what, what are we thinking, buy totality, you know, uh, buy dogs, three cats, you know. Just so we have an idea, we know what to look at and come back, so we're not going back and forth after the time. So maybe somebody, if they just give us an answer in two weeks, right, or if you have some thoughts now, I have a clear plan, it's probably here by the time, but. So, give us our speed, what do you think would be a good number, and then we look into it, obviously those now will be grandfathered in. But if there are other underlying issues, we do have ordinances and statutes that would cover, even though they have. In, there are still statutes that require some sanitary stuff too, so it's, those are basically certainly deal with as well, so.
Um, I, I, I'd interject, you know, being in public housing with pet housing. The, the other thing that, that I have to consider in my apartment complex, they're allowed one day. However, they may have a service animal and they may have comfort animals and so forth, so. Those are some things you might want to keep in mind when you're working on your uh limitations as. Making it specific, okay, how many service animals can you have, how many comfort animals, how many, because. I've been at housing conferences where they say, okay, you can have one pet, but. Reality is, you couldn't have ten service animals, if you have, have a dog procedures, or if you have a dog that, that. That can tell you when you're gonna have a diabetic or, or uh anxiety, or, you know, for each ailment, so. I'm just interjecting that as.
Right, what is a service animal, and you can't deal here much longer when they have a pot-bellied pig. And they're required to get rid of it, the ordinance says, no, probably no pigs, service animal. The other side of that is anybody can get online and give you shit, eggs are a service animal, so it's kind of one of those things. I'm kind of glad you brought this up, and I apologize, I've actually done this through my thing. We did have, I don't know if you saw the two animals that we had in the pound just recently, they were um, American bull terriers, minis. Um, it caused a lot of discussion on the Facebook post, I know a lot of people were from here about our pit bull ordinance. Um, I know Wilson is certainly looking into theirs due to some discussion. Um, I was approached by some people, some citizens about it, and my response to them was, they need to come address the council. Um, at the very least, within their five minutes, a lot of discussing with you guys, if you choose to go further with it, that's obviously a cho, um, your choice. I told mine, I believe it was my responsibility as the police chief to say we need to change this, um, I would tell you from my perspective, I would be in support. About changing that, uh, these brief specific, um, with some tightening of our vicious animal side. Little bit steeper penalties, a little stiffer there, but at least to be not the breach specific, because I did make that. A little difficult to, to get rid of a couple of dogs that shouldn't have been here to begin with, I mean, they were, it was a kind of. Have it on the interstate, it was arrested and abandoned at our hotel, so. So I don't know if anybody will show up, that is another animal thing, that if we are looking at the animal. Ordinances, I don't know if that was something that anybody on this board needed to be considering to, to look at as well, so.
Okay, so my other thing, I know one time we had talked, I mean, this was in the Crease, our advisory committee meeting about. Not allowing people to go down into like the detention mason, and when I was walking. Walking on the path yesterday, I saw somebody down there taking pictures, like I don't think they got in like the swampy part, but, but, so I took a picture of it and. Taking a picture, but there. But I couldn't tell you who it was, but, um. You know, like at one point.
So, Stewie's suggested morning science, is that something important to put out there?
What, you're gonna sing here to the man?
Uh, yeah, warning saying, uh, come in here and risk. It's the staff level, we weren't, at the staff level, we weren't really sure what happened. Uh, that's how the staff felt, but um.
We're gonna have him try to feed the goat there first.
So my question from a law enforcement standpoint is, and I guess maybe even as a citizen, I've been there seven years, but. The kids are playing in that creek that ran through there for, well, you two were probably behind a grasshopper, one would say, cause they're down there playing, right? So, we're okay to play in the creek with running water, but we're not gonna allow, no, we don't want them down there playing, I'm gonna get that. Generally, the people who are down there, they can, a clash boat or a wedding, you know, fifty, you know, whatever, or the kids are looking for crawdads and apples, turtles. You know, I think it's. Where do we? Where we draw that line, I, I, from my perspective, from law enforcement, a sign can be easy to enforce, because it clearly states, but. Again, just because you've done it forever doesn't mean you still should get to do it. Something's been going on forever and today, and not on one, we've had no issues, and I'll tell you. When we, when, when that was done, I asked citizens very upset, wanting to fence around it, and I'll tell you why. We will put the same fence up around that that we did the river. Fair enough, we call the same company, we're gonna take care of it, and they're like, perfect, thanks, like, there is a fence on the river, because. Okay, so it's like, there's nobody thinks, this river's been here so long, it's obviously much more dangerous than, than that, so it's. Where do you?
Yeah.
Where do we interject as long as within that, some of the things.
Show the video of this thing, those are the creative stories, I don't know.
Well, I didn't know there was a thing, that would lead me out of there after this, this guy does not make space, so.
No, we haven't anything about, you can go in there, it's just wherever you go in there.
And then nearby things, you know, side, you know, we would deal with that, that city property can't be down there, I mean, I can have an issue at times. This is just me, like, uh, people will get the van shell, or have the van shell, that shelter house up there, and they'll rather, people run up next to it, it's like. Everybody wants you in the grass, but, you're a cool, you're a perfect party, you're. You know, it's kind of one of those gray areas, what do you do, don't like it, but I, I, I understand. Citizens regret it while they kill them, but, yes, we don't want vehicles to be in there. Town documents, and stuff like that.
If I was me, I would have to fight the law.
I was there, I just, I worked, we talked about it, I think it was at a creepy park advisory meeting, I just couldn't remember where we landed, landed. She wasn't being, I think it was, wasn't being distracted, just taking pictures.
Well, there's a lot of wildlife. Jessica said.
Back to the dog mechanics, uh, I would seriously like us to look into this beta neuter program. I know it's always been viewed as, as being financially undoable. Um, but nobody's ever given me any numbers, what it would really cost. I, I think it's only me that you can control her, I mean, cats especially, I'm pretty sure I have three cats living under my desk right now, and I wish weren't there. But the neighbor lady meets them, so, um, so. I'll take them for a ride, but. So, that's really all I can, that, please.
I will do some research and work with the chief on getting some numbers.
Okay, so, uh, the mayor online?
Um, Dawn is on there, but I don't know if Dana's with her, so I don't know.
Danny online? I mean, so there definitely are decisions, um, not where Dustin, one of you. Suspecting, I mean, you were invited to one of these. Yes, so, so, student that was birthed. Um. And we don't expect that in the end, and after you want to, you go. Um, okay, how long will we need to wait? We'll swap through this. You know, so, or, you know, is it my request?
Okay, Mr. President, I'm introducing to, we're determined to executive session. Uh, to include the city council, the administrator, city park and the attorney. Uh, come out at six fifty-five. Or what, oh, two for matters to discuss non-elected personnel. Uh, to discuss the performance of non-elected personnel, I get it all? Till six fifty-five, six? Six fifty-five, okay.
Can we move a second, and we go into executive process? Then the session for this discussion performance of non-elected personnel until six fifty-five, any other discussion? Send this session for this discussion performance of non-elected personnel until six fifty-five, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, we're going to the executive session, thank you all. Is it, or probably done and forgotten.